I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B, roll call. Mrs. Arvazak.
Ahern.
Here.
Elizabeth.
Here.
Donahue.
Here.
Engler.
Here.
Gatis.
Here.
Kopeh.
Here.
Yuhas. Descendo.
Here.
Squires.
Here.
Item two, presentations. Dr. Solomon.
Uh, Mr. President, I don't have any presentations.
Okay. Item three, addendum. There aren't none this evening. Item four, hearing of the citizens, public comment. In order to speak at this time, the following must be met. Must be a West Mifflin, Whittaker, or Duquesne resident, current employee, or taxpayer. Matter must have been discussed through proper education channels, direct comments to board president and/or superintendent, and remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. If you have questions about the agenda, we will attempt to answer those as we move through. The speaker tonight, Diane Stinesic.
Uh, Diane Stinesic, twenty-eight of three, going anywhere in this country. On, let's see. On page three, invoices. Um, I still want the legal tax service contract reviewed and make changes as necessary, especially with the filing and notary fees and postage. I know that if we don't question it every three years, um, that it automatically removes. The other issue is the, uh, bills for Andrews and Price. Um, I agree with all, but the last one, number eight, uh, that's litigation from April to June of two thousand and twenty-five, which would fall in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that money should be expensed out of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and not from the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So whatever you had left over from twenty-four, twenty-five, that fourteen thousand, I mean, my glasses on, four hundred, minus ninety-seven dollars, should come out of that excess money, not twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six money. The other issue I have is conferences. Back years, years ago, there was, uh, a, put a halt on conferences. So I'm looking at these conferences. So there's thirteen conferences where substitutes have to be hired for that day. So which means we're paying our twenty-six salaries that day. We need to curtail or stop these. We need to curtail and stop expending money until the good old state of Pennsylvania passes their budget, money is coming, and the federal government passes their budget and comes and gets money. There, you have a, a freeze on field trips. You're worried about freezing field trips, whereas you're paying out twenty-six salaries for people going to conferences. That's on the committee agenda, okay? Most of the conferences, uh, field trips, if my understanding is correct, comes from PTA money, if I'm correct. The other issue is there are field trips that involve our special needs kids. That's part of their curriculum, so how dare you cancel their field trips when it's part of their curriculum? Please don't punish the kids. Cut those conferences and quit paying out all of this money that we just don't have.
Thank you, Mrs. Stinesic.
Number eight, go to a conference.
Item five, information items. There aren't on this evening. Item six, board secretaries reporting. Ms. Arvazak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four items this evening. Number one is the executive sessions from September. Number two, the approval of minutes from September, um, the possible approval of our student, student board reps for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, and second readings for seven policies.
Any discussion on these items? Item seven, director of finance and operations report. Mr. Weir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, under A, finance, we have two items. The first one is the annual mailing we do for homestead exclusion. We contract with the Allegheny year intermediate unit, uh, to do that. The second item, our September real estate tax refunds for both twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, uh, total amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars and eleven cents. Those are the two items we have for finance.
And item one, these, these go out to anyone who isn't in the Act One, all those houses that could apply for a, and that's an annual thing.
Correct.
Uh, purchasing and contracting.
We have one item right now, uh, Baldwin EMS, emergency services, uh, for the year of twenty-twenty-six. They'll provide ambulance services for our district employees should they be needed, and that's at a cost of five hundred dollars.
Item eight, financial reports.
A through C are secretary student activities and treasures reports as presented. Uh, D, refunds subtracted from expenditures. I, nothing jumps out at me. There is anything out of the ordinary. E, tax collectors report. Uh, you can see there's a, a good chunk of property tax, but that is historically what we do see happening in September when people are trying to get money in by the two percent discount deadline. Um, I will say that we will have a decent chunk of money that will be appearing on here for, uh, business privilege tax. We just received it today, so we didn't have time to get it on the agenda, but it'll be on there for next week. And F, online sales, we have nearly thirty thousand dollars in online sales. Um, homecoming dance, uh, leading the way, and then both Titan shop and football, uh, with rather healthy months also.
And to speak to Mrs. Stinesic's point about legal tax, I know that when you compiled your budget for this year, one of the things you did was put in all of the deadlines for the upcoming contracts for all of the different professional services and contractual, contractual weighted services that we have, and this was on there, and we will, when the time comes, be sure to revisit it.
Yeah, we're not there soon, but yes, we have it on our list.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Item nine, invoices, bill of payable purchase orders.
Thank you. Uh, we have items one through eight. One through three are legal tax service, um, sort of standard what we see typically. Four through seven are Andrews and Price September. I'm sure, four through, uh, six are, then, uh, number seven for student disciplinary hearings. And number eight, the question was raised about the April through June litigation services. These were submitted to insurance. Insurance didn't get it back to us since, uh, until, uh, right before the end of September. These have been applied to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, not to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And we also have B, uh, the bills, P cards, purchase orders, and cash dispersment reports. Those are in the board's folder.
So just to clarify, the April through June twenty-twenty-five, the only reason we didn't get these as a monthly cost in our usual fees from Andrews and Price was because it went through insurance first and had to get channeled kind of through them instead of going directly through us. Yes?
Well, sort of, because typically, you know, again, what's on your agenda for your payment are the invoices directly sent to the school district. And so you have this arrangement whereby, and, and frankly, this would be the case everywhere, where the work that we do for your insurance company pursuant to, um, litigation assignments, those invoices would go directly to your insurance company after a deductible was exhausted. The problem here is, and again, without getting too much into it here, um, that the insurance company has sent those back to the district for direct payment. So, is that accurate, Mr. Weir?
It is.
Okay. But there was a delay in doing that, so now all of a sudden there's three or four months of invoices, kind of, they came back all at once.
But you guys had your bills in on time, and that's what I'm trying to clarify here for myself, is that it wasn't a case of like, oh, whoops, we forgot to charge you. Here's a bill back from, back from April. All of these were previously already submitted.
Yeah, on a monthly basis.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. That was good clarification in general. Item ten, district operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under district operations, we have one item, and that is the fall play production, uh, to be approved.
Any discussion? Item eleven, superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under superintendent's report, we have items student, under A, student activities as presented, B, student fundraising as presented, C, facility use, buildings and grounds, and D, conferences, and that is all we have under that.
So.
Yes.
The field trips on here.
Yes.
Are they, are they approved to move forward?
We, we put a, uh, hold on any, um, trip that we perform. If the club pays for it or the organization pays for it, then they can go. As far as special, that's called CBI's. That's community-based instruction, not field trips. So, uh, those are able to go on because they can use our vans and our Subarus because the groups are small enough.
And this is resultant from budget constraints and constrictions that are happening at the, the state and federal level to, to different extents, but once budgets get passed, we should be able to revisit.
Be able to revisit, yes.
So for instance, like, I think one was scheduled for, for February. Hopefully, at that point.
Yes.
Later. Any other discussion?
What's the benefit to teachers going to conferences?
Uh, a lot of the conferences they're attending right now are through Title I, uh, positive behavior school plans, um, uh, equity that they're involved in at Homeville. So it's a benefit that they continue to go out and learn new techniques, new skills that they can apply to their room. I think, uh, if you let your staff sit stagnant for a long period of time and not go out and get that kind of PD, then I think the education, uh, becomes stagnant for the students.
Thank you.
Item twelve, uh, professional personnel, thirteen non-professional, and fourteen athletic will be covered next week. Fifteen board president's correspondence I have on this evening. Sixteen executive session discussion. We have held executive session, uh, immediately prior to this meeting, we discussed litigation and personnel matters and, as well as some safety and some confidential matters. Uh, seventeen board reports. Hand it over to you, Mr. Sol.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On the board reports, we'll start with buildings and grounds. Uh, our first item is the, uh, truck quote that Mr. Zidik's looking to replace one of the, uh, maintenance trucks. Would you like to talk a little bit about that, Mr. Zidik?
It's just one of the trucks we've been needing for quite a while. It's, uh, twenty-fourteen. It's all rusted out pretty bad. The converter for going bad on it. Uh, we've got estimates to get them done. It was close to seven thousand dollars with the, the truck the way it is. It's not going to last much longer after that. And that's also, the truck we're looking at would have a salt spreader on it, so we would have a backup short hour dump truck if anything happened to it, because it's getting up there in age now, too. It's a, you know, I believe that one is, maybe, oh, it's a six, it's a dump truck, it's a dump truck. So it's getting older, too. So, um, just trying to update our fleet. We've got three of them that need outdated. This one, next year, we have another one I'd like to get done, and then the year after that, if we could, I'd like to look at the dump truck and add one updated.
And it's possible that having this one with the ability to serve as sort of a backup for that third one you were looking at, that when that time comes to look at replacing that one, it might not be critical at that point.
Yes, yes.
Is this the Walton Wynn Board quote?
Yes.
It's in our folder.
That's the one's uniform.
Do, do you solicit quotes from, um, folks that are in district?
We did. We've got that. We just got that right before the meeting. We haven't gone, sat down, and gone over.
So you're still going through the, are they all CoStar quotes?
Yes, they're both CoStars, yes.
I don't know what dealers are in our area, but like, I'd imagine, instead of sending our money outside, if we can match it and keep the money within the district, I think I'd recommend that, but it's got to be a deal.
Right, and we, and they are CoStars, and, and we, like I said, we just got that.
Okay. And then is this other company, the Sabre, is that a retrofit company, where they, you have to send them out to get retrofitted?
What we do from, like, the Walton Wynn's and the other one was from, um, certain, that one up on the hill was, I can't, I don't call yee-haw, but up there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Schultz.
Yeah, um, the cabin chassis off of them, they send it out to get retrofitted for the, the service body and the plow and the spreader and the lights and all that.
Okay. So for next week, if this was going to be on the agenda, you'll have all the quotes and what the.
And a determination of what the recommendation is.
The best one to move forward with, and if we, they're splitting hairs, and there's one outside the district, inside the district, if we move forward, one inside the district. Thanks.
All right, next item, hydro seed quote. Uh, you, in your folder, you got three quotes for hydro seeding, and that's for the front hillside of the high school. As you know, Mr. Zidik and his crew over the fall, late summer, early fall, has cleared that hillside off as it's becoming a safety concern due to the overgrowth. Uh, so we like now getting some grass planted there and try to keep it maintained so it doesn't come back the way it was. Mr. Zidik, anything to add to that?
No, so you summed it up pretty well. Um, there's a lot of invasive Asian, um, I'm not sure what the name of it is, uh, was taken over that hillside. So we cleared all that out, like, like Mr. Sol said, just so there's no safety issues, basically. Some trees, dead trees and stuff like that. Um, just open it all up there, it's on the screen.
And as well, we have a lot of rodents, as far as skunks, groundhog, raccoons running that hillside. So we have three quotes, and we're recommending the lowest quote, uh, which I believe is seventy-six hundred. Is that right, Mr. Zidik?
Eighty-seven, twenty-eight.
Eighty-seven.
What do they do, shoot that in with the hose?
Yes. On a truck, it's on a tower on a truck, and you got a big nozzle where you just.
Isn't it green?
Yep, yeah, and they have to add some additive to it because it's on the hillside. Um, sometimes they put netting on it. Uh, suggest we don't use netting because when you go to cut it, it just messes your mowers up really bad. So they have like a, a tack that they add to the straw. It's actually cellulose that they spray out, and it holds everything down to the ground, keeps it from washing away. You get a torrential, torrential downpour, it's not going to stop it.
Is this a good time of year to do that?
They said it's a perfect time of year to get it down.
Uh, the auditorium repairs and renovations. Mr. Weir, would you like to give us an update as to where we're at with firewater?
So there's different components to the auditorium. Uh, one is the cleaning of the ceiling area and everything that is high and needs to be accessed through scaffolding and then, uh, boards that are laid over, rafters that are up there. Uh, that will be complete in two weeks' time. So they've gotten about eighty percent of that work done, and they still have the final twenty percent to go. Uh, electrical work has started, uh, within the auditorium. Uh, we still have a considerable amount of work that's going to have to be done with the district's MDF room, which is really just the IT center and hub of the district. Uh, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. We're slated to have that done mostly during the Christmas holiday. Uh, we also have, um, the, uh, seeding that is, uh, a concern with the auditorium. Travelers Insurance has contracted with a vendor, I don't recall their name, but they do inspection of these types of things. They'll be looking for, uh, damage, uh, to the boxes, to the plastic, any types of mold or mildew. They'll be checking for infiltration of smoke and the byproducts from combustion, and they'll make a determination as to what the status is of those seats, if they're good to go, if there's a certain percentage of them that, uh, are damaged and need replaced, or possibly that they all need replaced. Uh, that's going to be, they had said in two weeks is what they were aiming for, but I have not seen a definitive date set yet for that inspection. But they estimate it's going to take at least two days, uh, and they're only doing a sampling of the boxes. So, you know, it's an involved process that they don't want cross-contamination to occur, so it's very much, even though it's not no war and you want, I don't know, I'd go so far as to say it's a clean room type operation, but uh, it is a, a very scientific approach. They'll do random sampling of the boxes to, uh, to make sure that they can identify the condition of those seats and that hopefully we can move forward with that component, because last I checked, if the auditorium is all finished but there's nowhere to sit, it's probably not an effective auditorium.
And just to be clear, we're talking about the seats that we originally purchased to replace, the old seats. These are not the seats that were sitting there.
That is correct.
In that room full of fire, smoke, and water.
We had maybe four hundred boxes of, of seats that were in the auditorium when the fire occurred. Some of them got a, some level of water damage while the fire was put out. Um, not a large number of them, but there was a number of them. And the, the seats were within plastic inside of cardboard boxes, but the plastic wasn't sealed. And cardboard boxes, generally speaking, are not airtight, so we're just not sure how much penetration has occurred. And, uh, this expert, uh, that Travelers has contracted with, they'll be able to let us know.
Uh, what about the, the floor, and has a determination been done on the stage, the, the level, or how far to go on the stage, the, the stage itself?
So the floor is going to be completely replaced.
Yes.
Uh, that hasn't occurred yet.
They don't have a schedule for that yet?
Um, I believe it, there is a timeline on different components, so it's part of that, but right now there's scaffolding that is in the middle that has an elevator going up, like, that all has to get taken out before they would move forward with, with the floor. For the stage itself, um, they're looking that most likely they're going to do a light screening, and then, uh, they will be painting the stage. Uh, the front of the stage is right now just bare, and that'll get, uh, you know, that'll get replaced. Uh, steps that were there will get put back. The one thing we still have to consider is the, uh, sort of wood that is up high. Um, do we want to address that? We're still sort of looking at that.
Okay, but, but the stage itself, they have made a determination that the damage is, at least on, 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 on the top, it's superficial.
Superficial.
Superficial and, and a sanding and, and, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds like there's still a long road ahead, but definitely appreciate the diligence the district's putting in and the attention that is being given to it. I know that this isn't something that will have an immediate turnaround and hasn't. Uh, it's, it's frustrating because we were in the process of renovating this to make it a space because we value and appreciate having that space for our students, but giving it the attention it deserves and making sure it's taken care of is, is what's most important now.
Yeah, Mr. Souls and Dr. Solomon have made, uh, you know, big investments on different things within this school district. Uh, curriculum and material certainly being one, but, uh, what has happened with the arts is, to a considerable extent, was being poured into that auditorium, and we were the eighty-five, perhaps ninety percent of the way complete with the renovations, uh, when that fire occurred. And, uh, so it's terrible that, you know, only a little over two months from now will be a full year since the fire has occurred, and for us to be at this point is frustrating, and that is an understatement. Um, I don't, I can't promise the board or the community, or staff, or students, or families, that the auditorium is going to be ready for the holiday shows. Um, that's what we've have sort of, heck, we were hoping that we'd have to be ready for spring stuff, and then that wasn't realistic.
Right.
So we're really trying to push for, uh, you know, Christmas time. Can't promise the board that, particularly with the seating being a, a real unknown still at this point.
Right.
Okay, replacement of the school zone sign, Mr. Zinnick and his crew, they replaced the sign down on Commonwealth indicating as you're coming towards the front entrance of the school zone times as well as the speed limit. Vehicle road signs, speed display, we're looking to put the solar type speed signs on Homerville Road down in front of the high school for the traffic control there because we do have walkers that come across there. So we are looking to, once the budget is passed, to actually look at, contact our senator to see if they can assist with getting our, our road signs down there.
Are we allowed to put them up there? Or are we looking, going to look into like making sure we have the authority to do that? And would they only operate during school?
They only operate.
Hours or during school like?
If you go past McKeesport, they have them.
Okay.
And so does Elizabeth Forward at some of their schools.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just during the school time.
Yeah.
Next, T's Trail opening completion date, Doc Solomon, would you like to talk about T's Trail?
I can tell you one thing, Mr. Zinnick and his crew did a nice job. They have fitness stations one and then completed. Still have to go with two and three. A lot of work is done, although it's exciting to see what is done already. We're still on track, looking at Arbor Day grand opening because there's a lot of signage that needs to go down here and make sure that all the safety requirements we want to get done is implemented. So I feel really good about what we're about right. Am I missing anything? No, sorry.
Any questions? Our, our opening ceremony, we're looking for Arbor Day.
Yes.
April twenty-fourth. Last item is the lead water testing. We did reach out to PSI, they will be coming in and we'll have results for everyone next week. They will just be doing drinking water. So water fountains, water sources within the kitchen, nurses station, so forth, will be the places that they'll be checking. Mr. Zinnick, is that correct? Or is it? Right. So we're going to ask the committee if we can move forward to put the truck quote, if we get that analyzed onto the agenda, as well as the hydro seeding for next week.
That's okay with me.
Yes.
Under Safety and Transportation, we're waiting for, to see the PCCD comes out with a grant and we are going to look towards going with the open gate metal detectors. Hopefully maybe if it comes sooner for the winter, if not, at least for next fall, when we have our fall sports. And just so you know what an open gate metal detector is, those are the ones that are at the stadium where you just walk through and people are monitored through you as you come through instead of individually coming through the, the old fashioned ones, one at a time. So we're, we'll be looking to purchase those through, grant if it comes through.
Is that, is that what the concern is? I saw a post weeks ago from a football game we hosted that there was a long line.
At a work game?
Yeah.
No, no, that was because their athletic director did not share the information that we provide every team that they need to be here and we give them all our rules, that how they have to come, what we require.
With the bags.
Yes. They did not share that. And it wasn't like Abbott and Wood has never played it before, they have. But no, that is not the reason. We're just looking that these metal detectors are more efficient and we can move more people through, but that had no bearing with our decision.
At least like the, you've been to a pirate game and you just kind of walk in?
Yeah.
Can anybody monitors a screen like almost and?
Yeah, yes, as they come in, it will show up, you know, you, you can adjust the intensity.
Yeah.
Next item is finance, I'll turn that over to Mr. Weir.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. First up, we had spoken previously about a program that the board was, or I'm sorry, that the borough was considering to put in place for real estate tax relief, if you will, for volunteer firefighters. What the board passed, both in terms of, the council passed in terms of their ordinance and resolution is in your folder. In general, what they are offering is up to a three hundred dollar tax refund, as long as certain parameters are met, different criteria. Those include number of responses to emergencies, training that would have to occur, maintenance, I think both on vehicles and, you know, within the buildings that the fire departments are, are housed. So there's a set of criteria and as I said, you have to be paying real estate tax to be eligible and the most that you can get is three hundred and if, making this up, if you only had two hundred dollars that you would owe, then two hundred dollars would be the max that you could get. But that, the actual wording is in your folder. So it's difficult to have board meetings and not talk about state budget. State subsidy money is not flowing, we all know that. I did a projection back in August on where we would be for the end of September. I thought it would be about twenty point four million and we were, were about twenty point two million. That, that worked out pretty darn good as far as accuracy goes and what I'm trying to do is look at what twenty twenty-four was like and where we currently are and how does that project out. So I did something similar for, from now through the end of the calendar year. When I first did it, I came up with, we would have about six point three million dollars on December thirty-first still in our general fund bank accounts. So we would be good at that point. There have been, just within the last, like literally twenty-four hours, a couple of things that have improved that picture. I excluded all state money from my calculations because most of the state money is subsidy money. Well, then I found out that next week we're going to get one point two seven five million from property tax relief, that's gaming money that we get back, that's not a subsidy. So we will get that, had not included that. So that six point three just all of a sudden jumps up by that amount. Also, to let the board know, when I got here in twenty twenty-three, we had ten thousand dollars that was sort of in our state bank account, it's not really a bank account, but the state had money for us, for access money. Ten thousand dollars doesn't go very far, but we have a consultant, Suzanne Fleason de Silva. She has been working diligently with people in special education and also Mr. Porter in our business office and we've been making sure that we've been diligent in getting things submitted. We have built that up to seven hundred ten thousand dollars in two years. So we submitted a request for four hundred thousand, actually four hundred two thousand of those dollars. So out of the seven ten, but we're going to be building on it like we have this year and on average we've been, you know, increasing by three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we're not exhausting it by doing this four hundred thousand. That money is going to be coming next week also and just found that out yesterday. So that's another four hundred thousand dollars. And as I told you, the business privilege tax money is, the quarterly, is going to be bigger than any one that has been during my time here. I don't know that, I don't know what's gone on in the past and not really, I don't know that it matters. And I don't know the detail at this point, but there was a significant business privilege tax jump, so you'll see that next week. So all told, I would say that we're certainly going to be, if my projections would be accurate, over eight million dollars that we would have by the end of the school year, the calendar year. I think that even if that relatively rosy picture is in place, if we don't have a state budget agreement by our December meeting, I'll probably ask the board if we can start investigating, getting a, a tax anticipation note. Because I won't know, you know, it's one of those things, it's not going to harm us to at least look into it. I don't think it's worth the effort right now to look into it. I do believe that after Halloween and before Christmas, we're likely to get a state budget resolution, but that's my personal thoughts. That's about worth, I don't know, a rock that you might find on the corner of your driveway, I suppose. There was a little bit of a nudge yesterday in terms of state budget where Republicans in the Senate and House were sort of pushing forward their end of things and the Democrats sent in the House also did theirs. So they're still not really working together, but they actually did something, even though it wasn't really productive and it was not an agreement, they actually were doing something that was budget related instead of just talking to each other. So I don't have much, I don't expect anything to get done before Halloween, but like I said, I do expect at some point after Halloween, I think they'll finally get it done. But I don't know what my crystal ball was worth. So that's where we're at in terms of financial status. So we're, you know, we're in a place where we're certainly solvent. To say that there's no impact on us would be incorrect because if we were getting this subsidy money, then our money market account would have a bigger balance and the four-plus percent that we get in terms of interest, when you're talking, you know, ten million dollars or fifteen million dollars or twenty million dollars, that's real money on a, on a monthly basis and we're not maximizing that because of this. So there is an impact, but I will tell you right now, you do not have to worry that we're not going to be able to write checks, you know, in the next month or two.
Now you said six point three million December thirty-first, perhaps a bit more, depending on what happens, but that, when we hear that, like as just common people, that sounds like a lot of money. But in the scope of the budget, right, I mean, it's not enough to keep us going here, which is why we would need to look into that note.
So expenditures for the district are not equal every month. Some months are more than others. For example, in March, we have a five million dollar bond payment.
Right.
March is a bigger spend than we have other months. But in general, if you said, okay, we have a sixty-eight million dollar budget, there's twelve months in the year, you know, you just say, ah, somewhat less than six million dollars we're spending on average per month. So that's six point three million dollars, you could say that's a little more than a typical month's average expenses.
Right.
So yeah, six point three million dollars, I would imagine for most of us, sounds like an awfully big hole of money. I know it would be at the Weir household, but in terms of school district budget, yeah, that, it won't last real long.
That's a time to start kind of raising a bit of a flag to say we've got to explore options.
Yeah, when we get down to having a month's worth of funds left, then the business manager starts getting tight and wants to find more money.
How big, how big of a tax anticipation loan would you imagine going for?
I'd probably have to get other people's opinions, but I think we would be looking in the neighborhood of two months' worth of expenses.
Okay. And then the, the cost of that, I don't know, I'm assuming there's interest on that.
Right.
So we would then end up fitting that bill out of our own money.
Yes.
Because of things that are out of our control, our elected officials at the state, federal government level, aren't doing their jobs and so we're going to continue to carry their water for them in interest payments on a loan that we have to get because we haven't gotten the money that's owed to us.
Plus the interest we lose on the gain from that.
Right.
Yeah, so the costs that are associated with the loan, we would have to eat. The interest for however long we would have the loan before we could pay it back, we would have to eat. You would hope that the state would think in their generous nature that they would take care of those costs for us, but I would recommend not holding your breath for that.
Right.
So, you know, your, your points are, are well taken.
And we're fortunate, I mean, I think we're fortunate to have the funds and be able to manage ourselves through the rest of the calendar year, but I know there are other districts that are not that fortunate that are going through this already or have gone through it already. And I just think that it behooves us, ourselves and our citizens to put the pressure on our elected officials to do their job.
Right, and I know Senator Piscatano, Representative Bengals, they are in favor of passing a budget. They want to work through this, I think, across the whole state. Nobody doesn't want to have a budget, but again, like you said, Matt, having the pressure on every state representative to say this is impacting us. It's, it's impacting us and it's going to just get progressively worse is important. Point to be made.
We passed our budget.
Yeah.
It is, it is frustrating that we have to pass ours on time. They don't have to and they continue to get paid even if they don't, so.
And in our budget, we need to guess at what they're going to award for that time.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice if the state budget were complete in time for us to actually have some level of certainty instead of reading tea leaves.
Well, I appreciate all your due diligence in helping to help us understand the forecast and the potential impact, so thank you for that very much.
Certainly, you're welcome. As was mentioned, district-sponsored field trips, we have put a freeze on. I know it was mentioned that the PTA often pays for the field trips. Those field trips will continue. I know Mr. Soul's already addressed the community-based instruction, so these are, this freeze is solely for district-sponsored.
Sponsored.
Financed field trips. Did want to inform the board that the Act One Index information just came out this week. The base index for the entire state is three point five percent. Ours is four point nine percent. The reason it's higher is the state calculates that base index and if you have a certain level of poverty within your school district, then they increase that Act One Index. So there are some districts, because of their relative wealth, they only have the three point five index and ours is higher than that at four point nine. Where does that four point nine percent come in? That is the limit, that's the highest amount that you're able to raise real estate taxes for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, if the board would go in that direction. To give you.
And that vote takes place in January on the Act One Index.
Yes. So the, for the sake of comparison, in twenty-five, twenty-six, it was five point five percent and in twenty-four, twenty-five, it was seven point four percent. So it's been trending downwards and I think that's because, you know, the post-pandemic inflation period has, has subsided to a considerable extent. Also wanted to inform the board that we had a committee put together to look at our financial software system options. We have ProSoft currently, it is a stable system, but it lacks modern features. We've had it for twenty-five years, so twenty-five years ago, I'm sure it was rather cutting-edge and was, you know, a top-of-the-line program. Twenty-five years, a lot has changed. So we looked at six separate financial packages, financial software packages. Those were Aptifund, which is sort of the successor to ProSoft, offered by Harris Systems, then Link, CSIU, which is a Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit, Power School, Skyward and Tyler. So we looked at those six. The committee, which consists of. The committee, which consists of myself and the business office, also Mrs. Teeter, who does our HR, and then also Mr. Getz to make sure we had an IT perspective, and also Mary Beth Miller, Secretary from Homaville, just so we had a building perspective also. But that committee whittled down to two finalists, which were Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit and also Skyward. We had follow-up demonstrations and Q and A with them. I'll be honest, the, the two were relatively equal in terms of the committee support. Nobody felt one was bad and the other one was good. It was fine lines that were being used to try to distinguish between them, and I will tell you the fact that Central Susquehanna develops their own software, supports their software. They have three hundred twenty-one school districts in the state that do use their software. It is my recommendation that we move forward with CSIU. The cost is for year one, which would be the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, that's not happening this year, it would be for next year, a little shy of fifty-three thousand dollars. That may sound like a lot of money, but year one cost for some of these that we were looking at ranged closer to a hundred fifty to a hundred eighty thousand dollars for year one with different implementation costs. And on a go-forward basis, the base of, the base software plus the modules that we want to give increased functionality for us, it'll be about forty-seven thousand, and I'm sure that will increase each year by, you know, some amount. But we're spending about forty thousand right now on ProSoft. So it's, in my estimation, it is money well spent.
Question about that.
Sure.
I know ProSoft's pretty local, so are there schools in this area that have that same software that, because I mean, that's a huge undertaking, so.
Of the CSIU? Yes, there's at least a half dozen, probably more. We asked specifically for people to share with us relatively new within the last two years, people that have transitioned from ProSoft to their software. CSIU had Connelsville, they had Beaver County IU, I believe was, or was it Riverside? There was an IU that was involved with that. There was another school district, too. So we reached out to everybody's, if you want to look at that, references, right, the clients that they have recently brought on. Some of them really struggle to have anybody that fit that. For example, Skyward, there's both Brentwood and Baldwin use Skyward, but they've been there with them for quite a while. But these other ones, they have come specifically from ProSoft, went to CSIU, and the people that we spoke with were very high in their, in their praise and their recommendation for CSIU.
How was their learning curve?
Well, any system has a pretty steep learning curve, right? You know, so no matter how good the training program is, you know, and no matter how good your implementation teamwork is, you know, there's always going to be some stubs of toes, some frustration points. It's just, anything at that size is going to happen, but everybody has said that the training was really good, and, you know, we have seen the software demonstrated to us. We haven't been trained on it, but we have seen it, and I don't want to say it's immediately, everything's intuitive. You have to learn, you know how to do things in ProSoft right now, and it's not going to be exactly the same in any software package that we would move to. But, you know, so I'm confident that we'll make that transition, not without some level of heartburn, not without some days that I'm going to be yanked at myself that went down this path, but when it's all said and done, it'll be best for the business office, it'll be best for the district.
Yeah, my, my question was just in your conversations with them, what was their experience for the learning curve? You know, how was their?
Was it intuitive?
Yeah. And, and you answered that. They, they felt it was, it was a route, they had, they had proper training, and the learning curve was not a major problem.
And the support, they have said that the support has been very good.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was.
And I will tell you, ProSoft's support, in my estimation, has been very good. And that was important to me, was to find something comparable on the support end, right? So if you've got a payroll issue, you want help ten minutes ago. But in general, you know, when you're stuck on something and you're frustrated, there's varying levels of severity, right? So you have different tiers of tickets, I suppose, but everybody has said that CSIU has been very good at being responsive in a timely fashion and, and getting solutions.
Thank you. When are you looking to make this change over?
So the goal has been July with the start of, you know, the new school year.
So be ready for the new fiscal year.
Yes. There's complic, there's a complicating factor with that. Because with schools, people that work a hundred eighty-two or a hundred eighty-eight days, teachers, paraprofessionals, they're getting paid in August and July for the previous school year. Their new pay doesn't start until the end of August when school starts. So you have this little bit of gray area, so it's possible that we might want to do payroll like September first, just to let the payroll cycle end, but would want other things to, to go forward on July first.
And is that possible?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have an expiration date on ProSoft?
Very good question. So ProSoft will support us as, you know, as long as we're paying for it, right? What I am most, so, and they will, if, if we came and said, you know, we want payroll to go for three months, they would prorate that and, and continue. I will say that ProSoft, as I said, they've been really good in terms of support, not walking away from ProSoft because we're disappointed with their people.
Right.
That's not the case. They've been very supportive, very understanding, and my biggest concern, if you, well, I don't know, it's not biggest concern, but a major concern is our historical data. And bring, anytime you try to bring data from one system to another, there's always issues with that. They would continue to host our data at about a fifty percent rate. Consider that not the most attractive option. Also, they will give us our data and load it onto our own servers, and then we're responsible for it. And then it's, they give it to us for free.
Right.
So my recommendation will be that we purchase, I'm imagining just a single server will be sufficient. IT may not be happy with me about that because that's going to be one more thing that they have to maintain, but I will tell you that probably two to, probably three weeks ago, I was looking at data from 2016 and 2017 because I needed to, right? Not just for the heck of it. So having access to ten years' worth of data, you know, I, I would recommend that we do whatever we need to keep that data available, and by the time 2035 rolls around, then maybe we don't care about the ProSoft data anymore.
As a third option, is it possible that there would be a third-party host for the data that we could use in a cloud storage space? Is that an option that would be maybe an intermediate of cost, where it's not going to be fifty percent the cost of ProSoft, but, you know, it's not going to be nothing either?
I haven't looked into that, so.
But that, that might be an option to explore.
I would think that probably is an option.
Like, IT would probably feel more comfortable with it, I imagine. I, I might feel more comfortable with it. It depends on the security levels that that group's giving, too, because all of our financial data, we don't want to just have flying around.
Well, our financial data has been within our system here internally for a very long time and just recently moved to the cloud with ProSoft.
Okay.
So we housed our financial data.
So we have a familiarity with doing that.
Yeah, we had that, we had that level of risk. I mean, what you're really talking about is mitigating risk.
Yeah.
And I certainly understand that component, and it's something that we can look into, and we're probably, you know, eight to ten months away from, you know, really looking to sort of separate from ProSoft.
What are you asking for us? Because I don't see the contract or anything in the folder, or you're just letting, making us aware?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get that in for, so don't have a contract by any means.
No, yeah, right, but you're just saying you went through this process and you think you have a finalist, and that this is going to be coming our way pretty soon. So there's still time for us to have discussion and talk to vendors and see that, make sure that we've considered all the potential permutations that we need to get this thing done the right way.
In terms of storing historical data?
Data, moving from one software to the next software, all that planning and everything. We still got time.
Well.
Like, this isn't going to be on the agenda next week.
I, I'm bringing it up because I would like it to be on the agenda next week, because...
Don't we need a contract, though? Like, or a statement of work?
Well, I think we can say contingent upon the...
Yeah, you, you could say contingent upon our final review and approval, but it...
Is there a reason we need to do it this month?
Well, every month that goes by, so like, when the question is, will we be able to do this in the timeframe that I set?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Every month that goes by makes that timeframe less and less likely.
Okay.
So even if we don't have a final contract, maybe at least just the terms, is that...
Yeah, terms, plan, like, I'm curious, I have a lot of questions, I'm not going to bore this board with them. I'd be curious, I'd like to be involved with it, if that's okay.
Sure. And, and like I said, they have three hundred twenty-one districts that they're working with across the Commonwealth. I'm not saying that whatever they would offer us is we should just take without any level of analysis.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, certainly we would want that review to go. But I don't want to go down that path if the board was not receptive to it, like, just in, in general here.
I'm okay with it, I just have a lot more detailed questions once you figure out who you're moving to and what their plan is and how they're going to make sure it's done right and you're not July one, and now we turn it on and it doesn't work, or...
And nobody gets paid.
And they have to roll back to ProSoft for some reason. So I just want, I just have specific questions I'm not going to bring up here.
Yeah, you're, you're more familiar with system transitions than the rest of us.
And there's no documentation for me to look at in order to just, to assess whether that's a, they have a sound plan or not? And that's probably what I'm looking for, is like, what's their proposal look for?
They have shared, they have shared a timeline implementation.
Like, proposal, statement of work, timeline, what types of, what's their approach going to be, and just the architecture, things like that, that I'm more interested about than, you know, need to talk about, like, here, because, but I'm curious as to what it's going to be like, so that it's legit. Not that it isn't.
We'll get all that information together.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I can, if you need to know what I'm looking for, I can let you know, like, in an email or something.
Yeah, that would be great.
They should be able to pull it together.
Because I will tell you, they've been the fastest responder to any requests I've had, and it's just, boom, it's, it's here.
I, I would put this under technology next time. Like, that's a tech, I understand it's financial data, but this is a technology item for, just for discussion, that's all.
So the committee's okay moving forward with this being added to the agenda under contingency and approval of our solicitor?
I think it depends on what the motion says. If it says, like, to explore, but we're not, are we putting these fifty thousand and forty-seven thousand, forty-seven thousand dollars on that agenda, or are we just saying?
Well, I would like to give them whatever they need in order to start moving forward.
Got it.
And, you know, that's...
Okay.
That's, that's what, could we wait until November? We certainly can.
Yeah.
And that's just one more month that we're...
I understand. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to delay.
So I just...
I just want to make sure that we're doing, I mean, this is a big deal.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
We spend a lot of time in the business office.
Evaluating different options.
Yep.
Okay.
And Mr. Blazewicz, you're going to get some questions compiled and sent, and if this is on the agenda and those things haven't been resolved?
Yeah, put it on the agenda, that's fine. If you can get them to send the documentation between now and next week, and I have a chance to look at it.
We could table it forward, we could...
Sure.
I mean, the issue is if you don't put it on the agenda, then you can't take any action next week, but if, if you're not comfortable, you can always table it.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Let's go, then?
No, I'm good, yeah.
And with the firefighter? Real estate, is there, I guess the discussion to be had for the committee is, is this something we want to pursue for the district as well?
For the firefighters?
Yeah, with the firefighters to essentially match what the borough's offering, with the three hundred dollar cap.
I'm definitely for that. Yes.
Yes. And I noticed that the borough advertised this in the paper because they did it as an ordinance, and anytime they do that, they always advertise that they have an ordinance vote coming up. Do we have to do anything on our end?
Because for, from the district's perspective, it won't be an ordinance, it'll be a resolution.
Right.
And it'll just be part of your normal board action, your board action agenda.
Okay. Can we write up, like, a procedure, though, like?
Sure.
So people understand how to submit it, what's the format?
Right. I think we'll piggyback with what the borough has done, to be honest.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, in fact, if we can get it, that it's a one, one application, you go for both.
Out with tax collector.
That would make it, that would make it a lot easier for them, too, so they don't have to repeat, make sure, you do two of them and you have one little mistake on one of them, and it all gets tossed out.
And then they don't need to worry about, did I apply for this group, did I apply for this group? It's one application.
Work with the borough, just make it one application.
I'm sure the tax office would appreciate that, too, although I guess the way it works, since it's a rebate, is they pay their regular taxes and then we essentially reimburse them.
That would be correct. So it won't be the tax collector, that'll be deducting three hundred dollars from the tax bill.
You'll pay your tax bill and you'll send in a, a mailer and get a rebate.
Yes.
So is this for homeowners only?
West Highland homeowners.
So what about, so we wouldn't be able to do anything for somebody who doesn't own a home?
They don't pay real estate taxes. I mean, like, this, this has been geared to real.
I know, but does the borough do anything, so it's like income tax or anything like?
I don't...
You know what I mean?
I, I do, and all I can tell you is what the borough chose to do was go the real estate tax route.
So they're real estate also, so you have to own a home in order to be a firefighter in order to get the rebate?
Correct.
I mean, I, as I understand the program, it is centered around real estate taxes.
I think it actually came from county level.
Yeah, no, I know, but I mean, why are we doing this? We're doing this incentivizing people to go out and volunteer to be a firefighter in our, our community. Well, not everybody owns a home.
Yeah.
I don't know. I think we're good, it's moved forward. I just don't know if there's other things that we could think about to maybe get creative or on. So I'm thinking of source something, and we should be recognizing that. And maybe it's not money, maybe it's just recognition and, and, or supplementing something, just a thought. Still, we build a pipeline to these organizations so that they can fill their rosters, because I'm imagining that that's the whole purpose, is so they can fill out their rosters and we call nine one ones.
Yeah.
And we show them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody else is running from the fire and they're running, too.
Yeah.
Got it.
That's my report, Mr. Soulz.
Thank you, Mr. Soulz. Under athletic activities, we have asked the committee to go ahead and approve a soccer MOU for a soccer group who wants to practice at the stadium. I believe it's two nights a week. They do have a pricing that they're willing to pay in the folder. Is that something the committee would like to move forward with?
Yes. I would, I noticed one part in there. We should specify in terms of security, that security either is provided by that group or by the district to make sure that that's tended to.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We have the fall play proposal on the agenda for approval for this month. We also got contacted by the Bettis Plant Basketball League, they would like to do another MOU, which would mirror the one that they used last year for the middle school gym to play basketball from, I believe it's eight o'clock to nine thirty. play basketball from, I believe it's 8:00 to 9:30 on Tuesday or Wednesday evening.
There weren't any issues from the previous one, I'd say, good.
Yes. All right, and we are in a enrollment cycle with PIA, WPIL. The numbers we're turning in to them are enrollment, we have 270 boys and 275 girls able to participate in varsity sports next year. That's all for athletic activities. Jump down to education, Mr. President?
Yep, sure.
Doc Sawley, you'd like to take a few of those, please?
November theme is going to be map giving, and so we're all kind of excited. There's still some details that need to still be worked out. That'll be run by Timmy Keller and Kate Danzak Muslim, but it will be a K to 12.
I think these monthly themes are really fun. I don't know, there's something different.
So far, so good.
I'd like to fit over.
Fitover, yeah. Fitover's done really well. We've gotten a few thousand views on Facebook and social, other social media aspects, so that's gone really well. We're very happy about that. While we're talking about the steam timber went exceptional. First and second graders came over to the high school to see some of the things that we offered. The two hottest things were the educational Minecraft that they dealt with in the esports room, that was a big hit, and then the Koi pond in the outdoor steam, that was the second we did. So, yeah, that went, that went really well. And it got an opportunity for some of our elementary staff to come over and see the things we have at the high school. As far as third grade, they went to visit the middle school. Needless to say, that was probably the first leg of the transition period for them to come over. So that's always a good thing. They came over and they had some activities here in the cafeteria. The older middle school kids did assist in that. It was really neat seeing them work together. Anytime you see an older student as a mentor, you know, that, that went really well. And then they finished up with a short assembly in the auditorium, and that was on the actual road out by C B, so...
The expressway.
Yeah, and, and of course, the explosions in the rock were, you know, that was, that was a big hit, too. That, that went, that went all really well. To jump back to Keystone testing, that'll be December 8th, there'll be Algebra I, the 9th will be Literature, and 10th will be Biology. That will follow what we have been doing. Those days will be remote and only the testers will attend school.
And that's remote, high school only?
Yeah, that'll be high school, yes, high school. Next is the Titan Art Gallery. Mr. Benaki, you know, did a lot of work for the athletic hallway, and he thought it would be all right to do some more work in, for the arts for the alumni, so I helped him out. And he ended up having some discussions with Mr. Rutter and Mr. Mann, and they came up with a Titan Art Gallery. This will be a decisive area where art can be hung. It's meant to be rotating to whatever the art department thinks. There's also going to be an opportunity for students to sell some of their work online, most likely, from pictures, and then that money can be donated to the art club. So they're working out all the details. Looking, we were looking at a grand opening in late November, but now we're kind of discussing that Lockinon Wood, if the Titan Performing Arts Center, AKA Auditorium, opens in January, just to do it at the same time, because they'll be in the same hallway and those supporting each other. So there'll be more to come on that, but I know that Mr. Rutter especially is very excited with his art club, so, you know, it's good to see some opportunity for those. As far as the exploring after-school meal, we had a conversation, Mr. Souls and I, with Kira, she's our new attrition manager, and, you know, we had some conversations about the monthly themes and some other, other stuff to make sure that for her transition period here, she stays up to date. The one thing that we did discuss was the opportunity for the after-school dinner. Don't know if that would be for all students or just ones on activities. Lot of more details work out with that to make that successful. But she is doing her research with her general manager, and there will give us some options. So we're going to whatever we think is the most beneficial for the students. So that includes the education.
I'll do it, thank you. The band auxiliary uniforms, Mr. Moreau did set up a meeting with the representative of the company who tailored those outfits, so they're working through that process. I believe Ms. Ackelson is now involved, who is actually the band front supervisor, so we're going to get that worked out one way or another here. Other restructuring update, we're still gathering our data and so forth. It's a little difficult with no state budget and with the shutdown with no title funds, but we're pulling a little bit of financial data from the past, trying to do some forecasting for the future. If, if I don't, I don't feel a budget comes soon enough, it's probably going to be status quo, status quo for the '26, '27 school year. Hopefully, we get a budget soon and we can move forward with our plans to get that report to everybody, but it's a little bit hard when the finances are tied up. So that's sort of where we're sitting with the restructuring plan. And then finally, within the folder, there was two class, two class surveys that Mr. Lick and Mrs. Shields working on, and that's to deal with the moving from the valedictorian salutatorian to the summa cum laude programs, the replicate what colleges do. So those surveys will be going out to the students here in the near future to give feedback. That's it for education, Mr. President.
So on, on the restructuring, I mean, I think that there's a lot of anticipation and curiosity from the public and from the boards, too. When, when we're talking about '26, '27, and you said we want to wait and make sure we see what happens with the budget? Is there a timeline that you see feasible for getting a feasibility study wrapped up?
If we don't have a budget by December, I would have to say it's definitely going to stay status quo. If we get probably one prior to the end of October, then we could probably move forward.
With, with continuing the study and analyzing it to establish what it is you're recommending to happen?
Correct, correct. Last item, policies. We have six policies up for first reading. 005 Organization, that is the organization of the school board, talks about the committees and so forth. We do have it in the folder for everyone to review. Next one is 308 Employment Contract. That is just an update with some verbiage. Also, two, I'm sorry, 626 and 6261, those come from the federal compliance, fiscal compliance, and the travel reimbursement for, for employees. And finally, the next two are the 823, which is the opioid, and that deals with Narcan. And the 827 is the conflict of interest, which asks us to make sure all employees understand that, and they'll have to sign off for that moving forward. So once that is passed, or if it's passed, we will be sending that out. Then we wanted to talk to the policy committee about if they would like to move forward in developing a new IA policy or a first-time-ever AI policy for their district.
Is 827, is that new?
No, that's been there for a while.
But there is a form for that that we are looking to roll out and have...
A sign off. It'd actually be a sign off since you've read the policy.
And a similar situation with 626, I believe it was?
626 was the whistleblowers act.
Yes, and that it should be posted to the website.
Yes. If that's approved, we do have a form ready to go for that as well.
On 005, I know I had, I had sent originally, when we got these policies to the committee, just a little language discussion about the role of the president and the number of members on committees. So the one part of the policy says that a committee shall consist of no more than three members, but then it also says later that the president will serve as an ex officio member on all committees. And so I wonder, like, Mr., I talked to Mr. Lucas a little bit about this, just kind of clarifying that it would be three board members and the president would serve as potentially as a fourth.
So total four. Right. Because in order to remain compliant with Sunshine, you know, it has to be a public meeting if a majority of the board is there and engaged in deliberation. So, you know, the magic number, so to speak, is four for those committee meetings, if they're not going to be public. So you could comply if you had three board members and the board president sitting ex officio.
Okay, and then...
I mean, we do the committee as a whole, kind of, this.
Right. Yeah, for the most part, it kind of functions as this, where people can sort of weigh in anyway.
There's not a whole lot of, like, not public meetings that I'm aware of. I mean, most meetings are either executive session or this meeting.
Yeah.
And sometimes you hold, we, committee meetings that are public anyways.
Yeah, that are public anyway, right.
And, and you're allowed to, I mean, you can hold them all in, in public if you wish.
So I, I mean, I guess that as the language stands is actually fine, as long as the committee agrees, yeah?
Yeah, they look, they look okay.
Yes. Oh, and the AI, I think we should refer that to the technology committee to review.
IP.
Yes.
Great.
Yes. I don't know what it is.
Yes. Very good. That concludes everything I have for committee, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Item B, Steel Center.
Steel Center, I'm going to have a regular report next week. However, there's one thing, one item I'd like to mention. Clarification to a question from last month. As I'd said, with the ongoing renovations, they should be pretty much finalized by January or February at the latest, but they'll still have punchless items to get through at the, through the end of the school year. However, there is an open house down at Steel Center on Monday, November 3rd, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. If anyone wanted to go down and, and take a look, and I'll, I'll tell you, it's fascinating the things that they've done with the cosmetology area, with the welding areas, with the baking area fascinated me when I just did a walk through there on, on Tuesday. And then a final, a, a final grand opening will occur next August, once they have all the punchless items before the new school year starts. I don't have a date for that, probably won't have a date for that for a little while, but anyone that's interested in going to see how it's been going along and all, all that they have to offer for, for the students right now, Monday, November 3rd, from 6:00 PM to 8:30.
We should post that on the...
Yeah, that might, that might not be a bad idea to post on our, on our, our website through social media.
Any other?
No, no, I'll do a regular report next week. I just wanted to respond to the question that came up, up last week.
Thank you. Eighteen, Slister, report?
I have no report tonight, Mr. President.
Nineteen, Or Business? Twenty, New Business?
Mark's not here. Twenty.
Any consideration starting at 6:30 next week, Thursday night, so we don't run into Steeler game?
It's on social media, since...
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think so. I don't want to advertise in the newspaper, it's just...
Just make it, just make it quick.
All you gotta do is tell the four people that are here, what's coming?
I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, there's nothing super controversial. We're pretty quick.
Is there anything super controversial in the Steelers?
Well, that was just thinking everyone aware there's a Steeler game next week. Keep it short.
You're on notice. Thank you, Vice President DeSenzel.
Twenty-one, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Ayer?
Second by Mr. Blazewicz. Meeting adjourned.